All right. All right, good evening, everybody. I'll call a meeting to order, meeting of the Carver Select Board for Thursday, July 13, 2023. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for listing and application. And so everyone is aware, our Select Board member, Dan Ryan, is joining us remotely tonight via speakerphone. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer? Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with the spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces, in our first responders, in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. All right. The first item on our agenda this evening, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to our 5:10 agenda item, which is the review and authorization of year-end interdepartmental budget transfers. So, Mr. Fennessey. Okay. I see Sue coming in now.
Okay. So pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, the Select Board can make interdepartmental transfers at the end of the fiscal year.
Bob, is that just... Dan, can you hear everything okay?
Um, I can. He's a little faded. Bob's a little faded out there, but if he could speak up a little more, that'd be great.
Okay, thanks. If you have trouble, just chime in and let us know, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Pass the mic. Okay, so, so this is, there's a number of items that need to be transferred from one department to another to finish the budget, the fiscal year. You've got to remember, this budget was formulated back in the late fall of 2021. So a lot of times, it's a projection, it's a best guess estimate, projection. There's certain items here that you cannot not deficit spend. For instance, legal. Legal is over, but at that point, when we hit the budget, you can't walk away and say to our legal counsel, well, just let everything else go, because we need to defend the town and so forth. Same with the police salaries, and we'll talk about that, and the police chief is here to answer any questions. The police salaries require overtime to fill vacancies, and a lot of those vacancies were done by a couple of issues that occurred during this year in the police department. We have a number of sources of funds that are available that can be transferred to cover these deficits. So that's outlined on the sheet. And I want to say that the FinCom had a Monday meeting, and they, and we were there, they voted 5-0 to approve the transfers and move it to the Select Board of the utilities, legal, planning salaries, capital outlay, police salaries, county tax assessment, and Medicare. And also to transfer from salaries to expenses at the bottom, the Carver Fire SCBA gear to, from the Carver Fire salaries. So the fire department has additional funds in their salary budget, but not in their expense budget. And they need to buy these breathing apparatus attachments to allow a firefighter to give their air to assist another firefighter who may be out of air. So it's a safety thing. So all those votes by the FinCom were 5 to 0, unanimous. The reserve fund, they voted to use their reserve fund money to take care of accounting, assessing legal personnel matter, and disallowed COVID-19 CARES Act costs. And that came to $125,000.
And that's their entire reserve fund, right?
That's right.
$125,000. So they hadn't used any reserve fund prior to that?
They didn't use a nickel of it, yeah. So which was good.
So, Mr. Fennessey, excuse me, could you just say again what was used, what the reserve fund would be used for?
So the reserve fund had $125,000 in it for the Finance Committee. Finance Committee voted to allot $9,500 to the Accounting Department, but that was for the pricing of audit and soft rate contracts increased, and also for staff training. The assessing salaries that went over, that was $5,500. A legal personnel matter that needed to be taken care of, that was $80,000. And the disallowed COVID-19 CARES costs, and the Finance Director's here, and she can get into what that is, but basically, it's putting forward during the CARES portion of COVID, different requests that were rejected after time.
Thank you.
So that's one, that comes out to $125,000.
Yeah, and I think a lot of these where we went over are pretty obvious. Some of utilities, utilities, obviously, they went a lot higher this year than they had been in the past. Salaries are what they are. Can you just comment quickly on Medicare? How did we end up so short on Medicare?
So I'm going to defer to the town Finance Director, Susan.
So we've always budgeted the same amount?
You just made talk, but we have someone remotely, so...
Um, we've always budgeted the same amount over the past few years, and with the cost of employment and maybe new hires and, you know, the increase in contracts and things like that, this is the first year it's affected us negatively, so we're going to have to look at reassessing that Medicare part of the budget.
Okay, so going forward, you would recommend we probably raise that part of the budget a little bit?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
And if I may, so the Medicare, that covers new hires, not only in the town side, but the school side. So that's, there's a number of hires over there that raise that, that Medicare cost.
All right, that's a good point. Thank you. Okay. Chief, would you like to speak briefly to the police budget?
Good evening.
Thanks for joining us.
Certainly. So, obviously, we've gone over in our budget, which does happen. We try not to, obviously. I take spending your money very seriously, and I think that we've made good financial decisions over the past 10 years. But sometimes things come up that we cannot avoid or cannot budget for. During COVID, one of the things that helped us save some money was our in-service training went to an online version, which didn't require us to send officers to the academy, but since COVID's over, that's returned to normal. And we have to send officers to the academy in Plymouth, which puts them out of town and requires us to fill their shifts. That increases the number of overtime use. That's a normal part of the operating expense, but it also is an increased expense this year compared to the years of COVID. So that's just one small increase. The biggest thing is, we had unfortunately two personnel changes that required us to backfill positions. One is our SRO, who has been deployed to Syria and is out, and we needed to make some movements to be able to supply somebody to keep security at the school. The SRO is a special job. It's a school resource officer, has to be specially trained with the new police reform bill. We didn't have anybody that fit that bill at the moment, but we did work with the school to bring somebody in, so there was an extra officer on duty every day, just assigned to the schools. That's had to be accomplished on overtime. Certainly, it wasn't budgeted for, but the school kicked in a large amount of that to make up the number. In addition, we had a personnel matter that required placing someone on administrative leave for an extended period of time, and because the level of staffing we have, that required his position to be filled with overtime. And that was a very large number as well. Those are not normal occurrences, but they do happen, and this year, they came together. We've been fortunate in the past 10 years that we haven't had incidents like that, but prior to my taking over, we had times when we had up to four people out, which can be devastating with the budget. But again, you plan for what you've spent before, and you do the best you can to get by that, and hope those things don't come up, but they do. Another problem with this is, over the past several years in the budgeting process, each time we've tried to keep a balanced budget, we've cut the, left the overtime line the same as it always was. And in the meantime, there's been contractual increases for the offices that increase their pay rates, which increases the overtime rate, which makes that overtime line go less and less. But we still have a lot to accomplish, that we need to accomplish with the offices that we have, and that requires us to spend money on overtime. So each year, that, the amount of work at least remains the same, if not gets, increases, and the pool of money to pay it has remained the same. So for this current year, that we're in fiscal '24, working with Mr. Fennessey and Ms. Moklin, we increased that overtime number to a more realistic number about what we've spent in the past couple of years to have a better projection for this year going forward. But again, it's just a projection. It's a projection like the snowfall count. If there's no snow, we don't have to spend it. If there's no major incidents, we don't have to spend it, or if there's not a couple of people out injured or out sick or deployed to somewhere, then we can save some of that money, but it's money we have to budget for as best we can, and then go for it. Obviously, we have to make these decisions as we're moving forward in the year, and I have to make decisions regarding staffing levels and what we're going to accomplish. And I believe, I'm very confident that the decisions I've made over the year have been what we would want, what our citizens would want from the police department, to supply the services needed, and that comes at a cost, and it's usually a cost of overtime.
And just for the purposes of folks watching at home, because I do have people that reach out to me about this from time to time. In fact, someone called me just today about this. This overtime does not include the details that people see when they're driving down the road. That's paid privately through whoever's hiring the detail officers.
That is correct. All details are paid privately, Eversource, King Richard's Fair, and such. There are public details for the DPW and for the school, but those are paid through the school budget or through the DPW budget. This overtime has nothing to do with that.
All right, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions from the board for either Ms. Moklin or Chief Doofly? No?
The chief's been giving us updates all year long about his challenges for, sorry, for the police budget, so...
Mr. Ryan, do you have any questions?
I do have a general question, not specific, but I know we had the annual town meeting in April, and in the past, we've done special town meetings to cover situations like this. I'm just asking the question of why did it take till now, till July? Do we not know that this was going to happen? And it sounds like the answer to that is, we should have known, or we did know. I'm just trying to understand the timing here. I know that we have unforeseen issues from time to time, and we can't do the deficit, but it's just a matter of timing. If we had known that we were going to be short in some of these accounts, we probably could have potentially taken care of it at a special town meeting in April.
Ms. Moklin or Mr. Fennessey would like to address that?
So the special town meeting in April, these numbers weren't at this point, and we would still have to run the rest of the year? And the Chapter 44, 33B allows us to do these transfers the last two months of the year and 15 days into the new year? So rather than going to a special town meeting and making these transfers without the end number, you're doing it in April, then you still have May and June to say, okay, we're going to have to do this again at the end of the year anyway? So it's just better to do it all at one time, in my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Ryan, did you hear that?
I did. I mean, it was back to my, I mean, the legal, like, you know, for example, we probably knew in April that we were running over the legal. You know, it's a high number. I mean, the 334,845 is high. It seems like we probably could have anticipated or known that some of these are running over and addressed them, at least in the part at a special town meeting, you know, with the residents. And then if we had anything after that that occurred since April, then we could have done it, you know, at our meeting. That's, that was my question of, you know, is there a better way to be prepared to do these in the future?
Well, I mean, that's something we could discuss, but again, even if we'd done something in April, if what I'm hearing is correct, we still would have had to address this tonight, because there still would have been shortages.
Correct. Yeah, it would probably have been a smaller amount of transfers, but we'd still be here today with some sort of transfers.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Ryan?
Um, no, thank you.
All right. Anything else from everybody? If nothing is...
On the transfers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I just, I don't really have a good comfort level with these estimates. And again, going back to last year, we had a transfer, I think, in July, and another one in late August. So I wanted to look at some financial reports, but, you know, I think you sent me over some budgets and some general details that I couldn't look at. They could be right, they could be 100% right on. It's my own comfort level that I'm just concerned with. So the process, as I understood it, would be, we're coming up on year end, and I think it's kind of unfair that July 15 is the deadline for these transfers, because all of a sudden, at the end of June, you're waiting for the bills to come in, you're calling up all your big vendors, get them in, get them in, get them in, my fiscal year ends, and you're trying to get as much in as you can. And then ideally, that I'll be in the system as much as you can, as much as you have, and then you're looking at your over and unders to find out where everything's going, and then you're making your guess as to what this sheet's going to look like. But even still, more invoices could come in, you could get a big, nice legal bill, you get something, so you're working off of that. And then you're coming up with your estimates. And I just don't see, I know we had some emails going back and forth, you're still kind of, is there a warrant article still needs to get into the system?
There is still a warrant that needs to be...
Okay, so you don't really have final numbers?
That's why these are a little bit buffed, so that if I did get the additional invoices, even the last payroll for the police department, it was an estimate until it got posted, and that was yesterday, as I said to you, that we were waiting for some information. So until the warrant gets posted and the checks get printed, the numbers are not on the budget document. So they are estimates. I'm saying legal, after looking at the final information, we're truly about $75,000, not $90,000, but I put a little bit of extra, and when we're not using the extra 15,000, then it's going to go back into free cash. It's not like it's staying with legal going forward.
Yep.
If it's not used, it's going back. And same thing with the police. They're not at 168,000. You guys ended up with like 145,000, 146,000, but I didn't have the final number, so I knew what their average payroll was with overtime, so I put a little bit of extra just in case there was extra overtime for the last payroll.
Okay. So then you're sitting there with your best guess estimate, but usually, what I've always seen in the past is, you sit there within your department trading your ups and downs. Like, for instance, perfect example would be fire, you've got the $21,000 going in and out. But I'm looking at this other category, and it looks like you're giving up $25,000 out of accounting, but then asking for $9,500 from the reserve fund. I guess my question is, why aren't you staying within the accounting division, using the extra 25,000 to offset the $9,500?
I guess just the way it worked with the reserve fund, it was 125,000, because we had all of the estimated needs in one category, and then we had where we had the money possible, and the 125,000 just happened to be exactly 125 in needs for those departments. So yeah, I could have done it differently, just seemed more streamlined to say, they have 125,000, there's exactly 125,000 that's needed, there's one bucket out of the way.
So assessing salaries, 5,500, there are no other credits in assessing at all?
I'm sorry?
You've got assessing salaries, you're looking to move 5,500 out of the reserve fund. So when the, you're looking at the financials right now, there's no credits in assessing? That would offset that?
There could have been in some of the expense accounts. We were just trying to make it so that we didn't have, we have, what, 10 things that we're taking money out of to put it into six things, rather than we're moving from assessing to assessing and fire to fire, and, you know, it would have been more moving around and more line items to be approving to move things around. It just makes it easier and cleaner to, just like planning salaries and conservation salaries, I could have, you know, done that, but you want more line items to have to approve or less line items to approve, which, we were just trying to make it easy to pick the numbers that were available to cover the most for our book.
Can you talk about the $30,000, because it seems like the $30,000 is somewhat a plug number to get to the 125,000, because I'm looking at the submission for the over and under for, I mean, I don't see the $30,000 anywhere in this detail. I know you talked about there was a strange calculation to get there.
The $30,000 for the COVID cares?
Yeah, what is it?
So it was, that's just rounding it to close out a fund. It was actually not a general fund account. It was set up in its own fund. We expended the money, and then what they didn't reimburse us for, or we got other reimbursements from Board of Health for COVID stuff that we put in the COVID cares. Plymouth County didn't pay for, but when they got their reimbursement, we were able to reduce what they didn't pay for. That's literally just paying off the COVID expenses, and I was able to get money from other places to make that an even $30,000, from other COVID reimbursements for other departments that weren't used.
I guess I'm just confused. So it's not like a line item on this sheet that you chewed up to $30,000? So this doesn't...
Oh, the sheet that you...
Yeah, we can't use this.
The sheet that I gave you for the COVID reimbursements and stuff? So some of it was disallowed, and then they told us why it was disallowed and what they needed, so then we were applied for it. So that's why I told you that that's not going to be the accurate number that's actually outstanding, and then we had other funds that were able to cover some of those disallowed costs. So that's just a worksheet, and again, I wasn't here during COVID, so that's just a worksheet that was given to me, but I know on my balance sheet that it's $30,000 that we haven't received.
Okay. So is that $30,000 for what fiscal year is that for?
It's for those fiscal years that are on there, '20 and '21.
'20 and '21?
Yep.
Okay. So I guess, as a follow-up to this, once your warrant article's posted, can I get a full set of the financials through June?
Absolutely.
Can I get all the general ledger detail questions that I asked you about, the six accounts? Can I get the detail on that?
I sent you the detail already, as updated as it was yesterday.
The general ledger detail, I don't think I got. I got the financials.
I gave you the '20, '21, and '23.
Got the budgets, I got. This is what this...
Yeah, that's the general ledger detail.
No, I wanted the actual account number that you gave me in the past when I looked at the actual line item detail, the expenses going through the account.
Well, maybe we should keep to the, this one agenda item. I think if you're looking for specific reports, maybe you can get together with Ms. Moklin...
We can get it afterwards, that's fine.
It would be a lot easier if you came into my office and sat down and showed me what you're looking for. If you're doing this, I can't see that from here. If you came in my office and said, well, I want the detail on this, and you're saying detail per expense, every single expense on it, I'd be more than happy to give it to you, but you have to come in to see me, rather than sending you documents that you're trying to make sense of, that are not something that you're normally used to looking at.
Okay, but I've asked for them before, and you've given them to me before, so that's why I was confused, why you didn't give them to me.
But you're telling me you don't understand what they say?
No, I completely understand this is a budget. I completely understand I asked for the general ledger detail for the utilities account. I asked for the general ledger detail for the town hall additional hours, and I didn't get it. So I'll be happy to come by and see you in the office afterwards.
So you want each individual invoice on that account?
Yes, the detail that runs in the GL.
Well, that is the summary, but I didn't understand that you wanted each invoice that was paid out of that.
Just the general, not the copy of the invoice, the general ledger detail, it shows the line items, that's all.
When you say line items, do you mean account numbers or invoices that were paid through the year?
Account number, and then all the invoices paid through the year equal that account number. Not a copy of the invoice, just...
Right, I understand.
I really think this is a conversation that we should have outside tonight's meeting.
Last question was, what do you think this effect is of using $460,000 of credits is going to have on free cash for next year? Any ballpark estimate?
The credits and the deficits equals zero, so it's not going to make a difference on free cash. You can either report this as negative balances in your accounts, in specific accounts, and positive balances in the other accounts, and your free cash is going to be the same number, whether you make these transfers or not. At the end of the, at the end of the day, when you close your negative balances and your positive balances, your free cash is going to be $100,000, and if you don't make these transfers, your free cash is going to be $100,000.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying is that if we didn't have the increase in legal, if we didn't have the police stuff, the police additional charges...
So if you weren't making the transfers, you didn't have the negatives?
If you didn't have all these charges, these additional charges, you'd have about $400,000, I guess, going into free cash.
Correct.
So, I'm just saying, typically, we have a substantial credit going into free cash calculation from the budget, actual versus budget, every single year. It just doesn't sound like this year, we're going to have a substantial credit going into free cash.
Well, we have our revenue estimates as well, and our revenue estimates are higher than what we estimated.
So we could be.
It's...
I'm looking for an actual number, I was like, what does your gut tell you?
I don't know exactly what you're asking, I just know that your free cash is going to be positive, and if, the only way to make it so that we don't have these negatives going forward is for the line items to be budgeted, but as Bob said, you don't know what's going to happen with legal.
True.
You don't know what's going to happen with fuel cost. You don't know what's going to happen with police overtime because of the items that Chief Doofly brought up. So you can budget as well as you can, but that's all you can do.
I know. All right, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Hues?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank Ms. Moklin for a terrific job that you're doing with this. I'd much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, did you have anything else?
No further questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Fennessey, just, I think it would be important for the board to know, were the board to vote against these transfers, what would be the next step that the town would have to take?
Probably have to have a special town meeting established and bring them forward to the town.
Okay.
Which is very expected.
Absolutely. All right. No other questions on the transfers here? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move that we authorize the year-end interdepartmental budget transfers as presented.
So, if I can, can I give a motion for you to use? So a motion to transfer from town hall additional hours of $52,000, municipal insurance of $15,000, Select Board contractual of $5,000, accounting salaries of $25,000, town IT $50,495, all colony assessment $38,350, townwide maintenance contracts $80,000, interest on temporary loans $69,000, for a total of $334,845. To the utilities for $35,000, legal budget $90,000, planning salaries $18,000, capital outlay stipends $600, police salaries $168,170, county tax assessment $420, Medicare $22,655.
Thank you. That's my motion, Mr. Jeff.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
It has to be roll call.
This has to be a roll call vote, because we have someone remote. Ms. Hues?
Ms. Hues says aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Drunk on it says aye.
All right. It is unanimous, thank you.
Also, you should take care of the fire department, a motion, if I may, a motion to transfer from fire salaries...
Oh, okay.
...of $22,100 to the Carver Fire expenses of $22,100.
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Hues?
Ms. Hues says aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Drunk on it says aye.
All right. It is unanimous. Thank you. We don't have to take any action on the reserve fund transfer, correct?
You don't?
Do you want a mo, do you want something on?
I think it'd be nice to do, to ratify it, yeah.
Okay.
So motion to ratify the reserve fund transfers?
Yes, of...
Is that sufficient?
Of a county...
Oh, accounting, $9,500, assessing salaries $5,500, legal personnel matter $80,000, disallowed COVID-19 CARES cost $30,000.
So the motion is to transfer from the reserve fund, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Hues?
Sarah Hues says aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Drunk on it says aye.
All right. It is unanimous. All right. It is unanimous, and I believe that covers all the transfers. Uh, do you see anything else there, Mr. Fantasy?
Uh, no, thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Moklin. We appreciate it. Thank you, Chief.
Can I just add one more thing?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I just wanna say thank you again for your support of our department and myself. Um, we hate to come to you to ask for more money, but I appreciate the understanding. And, um, you all have my cell phone number. There's any questions throughout the year, I'm always available if you need to. And I will keep your appraised through Mr. Fantasy as the year goes by about where we're at. But thank you again.
And I think speaking of the town, we all appreciate everything Car- the Carver Police Department does.
Thank you.
And Ms. Moklin, thank you very much as well for all your help with this.
Thanks.
And, and one note I'd like to make for the, on the police side, um, that we had a graduation of a police officer, candidate, Christopher Mahoney. So that'll have an impact on overtime in the future when he's out on the road. So it'll be another body taking these shifts where we wouldn't have to backfill them with overtime.
Yes, that's correct. And we're also moving forward with two more lateral transfers. Um, we've had the support of Mr. Fantasy and Ms. Moklin to, to get this project on the road, and, and I think that you'll see positive results from that in the future as we continue to work together to staff the department properly and be able to respond to, uh, the things we need to respond to on a day-to-day basis with the appropriate number of people. So thank you.
Good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a request for a one-day special license, wine and malt only, for Brewery 44 to be sold at Shirtlift Park during Old Home Day from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the request for a one-day special license, wine and malt only for Brewery 44 to be sold at Shirtlift Park during Carver Old Home Day, which is, um, July 29th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Hearn?
Uh, Sarah Hearn says aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Uh, Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
All right, it is unanimous. Thank you. Select board announcements. Ms. Hearn?
Um, thank you, yes. Um, the Carver Trail and Conservation Stewards received a mass trails grant, uh, for trail maintenance equipment and safety equipment. Um, we got this back in June. We're still waiting to hear from them on when we can make the purchase of this equipment. So it is a federal grant, so it's gonna take a while, but it's good news.
Great, thank you. Mr. Ryan, any announcements?
Do we have minutes that we need to approve for the last meeting that we're set out, or is that gonna be the last meeting?
Uh, yep, no, that's the very next item on our agenda.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, thank you.
There's no minutes.
Uh-
That's on Tuesday.
Oh, the Ryan, I'm sorry, Mr. Ryan, they're, they're on the next agenda. So there are none tonight.
All right, that's what I was asking, cause I know they went out for, for review. I didn't know if you were gonna approve them at tonight's meeting.
Yeah, no, they're on Tuesday's agenda. Okay. All right. And Mr. Uh, Mr. Carter?
I do not have any.
All right. And I just wanted to, uh, as the town administrator mentioned earlier,